I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee of December 13th. To order, please, would the Minutetaker please call the wall?
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
First item is an approval of the minutes of November 29th of 2012. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions? No? Would the Minutetaker please show Alderman Winger just came in? Next item is a report and recommendation on the DuPage Water Commission rate increase. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start by saying that, as you're all aware, there was a revised memo that went out in Tuesday's packet. Historically, the DuPage Water Commission has only given us an increase one year at a time. Last year, they actually set forth four years at one time, but because we had some rate uncertainty, we passed just the one year. And going forward, the council historically has said that we have to pass the DuPage Water increases, so since they were known, we put them all out there on Friday. Over the weekend, there was a number of questions and concerns about confusion, about our rate increases on top of those, and doing three this year, and one next year, and one the following year. So after some deliberation and conversation, we went back to the approach of just going one year at a time on it. We still left the three, the next two increases on there for reference, but tonight, we're only looking to approve the rate increase for January 1 of 2013. And again, that was set forth last year, and the next two years, we're also in that same package from the City of Chicago and the DuPage Water Commission.
So we need a motion now to do the January 2013 increase?
And then just before that, just to be clear, I'd remind everyone again, the city of Wooddale does not have a rate increase coming in calendar 2013. So the 59 cents is the only rate increase from the DuPage Water Commission. That's all that's going on to the books additionally this year.
I'll make it in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Comments? Alderman Wesley?
I have one question. Are we going to say tonight on how much of an increase that's going to be? And the other thing is, I understand that 59 cents for 2013, but are we going to notify the people 2014, 2015, that they also going to get increased at, that the county is going to raise it for they have some hankling out there that they are going to have another increase for they could, for they know upfront? Or are we going to do this every year? Are we going to come back and say, okay, we know it's going to go on because Lake Michigan Water went up? I understand that. But I would think that we would do something to let the people know that DuPage County is going to raise it again for they know.
Mr. Wilson.
Correct. And that was part of the reason why last Friday, we put all three of them in the memo, was since they were a known quantity at this point, just to advise everyone of what was coming. You know, we can, to notify the people, we've done in the past when the rates have gone up, we've put like a one-page flyer in there saying, you know, the DuPage Water Commission's increased your rates again. Here's what it's going to be. So we can do that if the desire is there, and then, you know, give them a heads up on those, the next two. Those next two years, though, there's the possibility of a city increase on top of those for the debt service for the treatment plant. But we can certainly, you know, put something on the top of the water bill or in the water bill, just to give them a heads up that it's coming down the pipe.
Well, what I'm just trying to say is, I want perfectly clear to our citizens that this 59 cents is not our increase, that we, as a city elected official, are not increasing it, DuPage County is.
Exactly.
There's got to be a flyer, there's got to be a flyer in the water bill saying that we did not increase it, because I know what's going to happen. They're going to see this increase, and your office is going to light up with a Christmas tree, and our elected official here, the phones are going to ring off the wall. So I just want to make sure that these people know that this is not Wooddale City Council is not making increase on the city part, it's Page County Water Commission. All I'm saying, I just want to make sure it's loud and clear.
I think we're all agreed on that.
And it's not ours.
And it should be on the next water bill, explaining that. Yes, sir.
I was going to say, certainly, you know, we can utilize the message center at the top of the bill and put that in there, that doesn't cost us anything to put it on there. So we can certainly put it on top of there for you.
Exactly. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, or do we need a voice? I don't need a...
Was there any other questions?
There weren't any more questions, were there?
I thought I had it. All in favor, words.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation on property casualty discussion. Again, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, this one is kind of a, well, I guess I hate to classify it as a no-lose proposition. We're currently with Irma for our property casualty and workers' comp. We've been with them for over 21 years, and lately, it's been not the way we think it should be. There's been some things perhaps missed, some things are becoming delayed, and their growth strategy has been more into the special entities like fire districts, libraries, some of the smaller districts. And in my memo, I said it's kind of the tail wagging the dog. Two meetings in a row, we talked about watercraft for fire departments, you know, a half an hour at a board meeting about boats. So it's become a little far afield, the way that they've grown, and in order for an entity to leave Irma, we need to give them a one-year notice that we're intending to leave. But giving them that notice doesn't mean that we have to leave. So that's why I say it's kind of a no-lose situation, where if we want to leave, we have to let them know, but that doesn't mean we have to leave. In doing so, to make sure that it made sense to even give them the notice, we've been working with a couple of different brokers to go out in the marketplace and see what sort of rates are out there. The bottom part of my memo, you'll see that the rates we've gotten preliminarily, obviously they're non-binding at this point, because we're not going to sign anything at this time, were anywhere from $48,000 to, what, $64,000 less than what we're currently paying with Irma. So with that in mind, staff thought it would be a good idea to, you know, let Irma know that we're thinking about leaving. We've also heard that some places, after they tell Irma that magically have a better underwriting experience and save some money just by sending them that letter. So at this point, like I said, it's kind of no harm, no foul. Worst case, we save money, but we do need to pass a resolution from the city council to send to Irma to effect that notice to them to possibly leave.
So I'll make a motion that we inform Irma that in writing, that we are giving them a one-year notice, which does not mean we're going to actually do it at this point, but a year from now, we'd be able to if we want to. Does anybody want to make a second?
I'll second.
Questions? Mr. Wesley?
And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask this question. We give them a notice, the companies that you are looking for in the change, you know, the company, are they offering us almost the same exact coverage? Because Irma's been good with us in our claims most part. Are they offering the same package deal, the same coverage of what we have now, or is it going to be lesser coverage? Or I just, I mean, I'm in favor of giving them, putting them a notice, see if they sharpen the pencil, but are you going to make the determination, or is the council going to make the determination, what company we're going to use?
I think the council will be doing that in a year from now, but Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you. Sure, ultimately, it would be your decision which direction we go. We had a meeting on Tuesday, so two days ago, with one of the brokers and some of the preliminary coverage levels that the other companies have quoted. In some cases, they're similar or exactly the same to Irma. In a lot of cases, Irma's limit on paper would look higher, but it's a shared limit throughout the entire pool. Like for the umbrella coverage, it's higher, but it's shared for all the entities. So, you know, once you, if you just kind of straight-line it, some of the coverages actually appear to be better, but that's part of the process over the next year to vet those out. That's also part of the reason that Irma wants a year, is because they want the quote that we get, so they can go through and point things out as well, and we kind of leverage them back and forth a little bit, so.
We can have that?
Yeah.
All clear? Anybody else? Alderman?
Brad, the other vendors, do we have to give them your notice also, or is just Irma the only one that requires that?
You're speaking of would be one of the new prospective vendors?
Right. You said you had four vendors. Those four vendors, are they required to get a year notice also when we are looking to cancel?
Yeah, my understanding is no. The Irma situation, because it's a pool, you may remember, a few months ago, there was the anti-pooling legislation that was floating around, and one of the things that was trying to get passed was like a 30-day out from the pools instead of a year. So, but now, since it would be, well, there's one pool that we're looking at, but some of it would be standalone vendors, they're just, they would just be a year-to-year renew, year-to-year, would be free to go. It's a come-and-go as we please, but yeah, there wouldn't be that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Have the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, report on attendance, remote attendance at meetings. We do have a quandary here, and I don't know legally what we can do, so I'll ask the manager, Mr. Murmas.
Well, basically, we're here tonight just to kind of pull the council on if they really want to get serious about some remote participation. It is possible to have remote participation, and we do have limited technology in place, and to get more serious technology, it would cost some dollars, not serious dollars, but we don't want to go down the road of getting more serious about remote participation and getting more in-depth with it if we're opposed to that philosophy. So we're looking for some direction on whether or not we want to consider remote participation.
I know that the attorney isn't here tonight, but would there be any liability if somebody is driving a car or a truck in remote attendance and has an accident?
Yeah, that I can answer.
Would the city be liable in any way?
I don't have an answer for you for that.
As staff hasn't found anything out further about it?
Not that specific question.
Anything else you can tell us?
That it is allowed, and we can get more detail on how we want to structure our own program, if you guys are interested in exploring that.
Suggestions? Alderman Woods?
Could they vote by proxy, just like at a board meeting, if they knew the questions?
Mr. Manager?
That I do know the answer for. The city attorney told me no. So does that mean no? His legal opinion says no.
What don't you understand about no, huh? Alderman Coles?
Well, I was sick for almost six months, and I tried to make a telephone, hook up telephone here for the meetings, and Mayor Johnson said no. So I couldn't do it when I was away for six months. And I was sorry I was away, but there ain't nothing I could do about it.
We did have one instance with an Alderman being out of town, and there was an important vote, and we did have a teleconference set up, but that was just for one meeting. Alderman Lazara?
Do you know if there's any other towns or cities that do this?
We did not do an official survey, off the top of my head. Do not know. We could do a survey. So again, without an official survey, our insurance pool, IPBC, they do allow remote participation, but they have a conference call phone number, and then they also have a web login where you can actually see the packet going along. So it's more geared towards, and those meetings are during the day, so that's more geared towards you sitting at your desk, you can't make it.
I'm sorry, can you speak up a little?
Oh, sure. Yeah, the IPBC one, the meetings are during the day, so it's, there's a conference call number, and then also kind of a webinar to follow along the packet. So that's more geared towards sit at your desk, call-in sort of thing, but those rules were vetted through the Open Meeting Act by IPBC's attorney, like ours would have to be. As for communities, I don't know, but I do know that our insurance pool does.
Alderman Lazara?
You know, I'd like to see this explored a little bit more. I think there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered, so I would recommend going forward with this.
If I may, the, from what I understand, it's a temporary problem, or it's a trial period problem, and it may resolve itself after, I don't know how, what the length of time is, but we might be better off just putting this off until after the first of the year, and finding out if we can get more information as how long this is going to go on. Alderman Winger, go ahead.
Well, I wasn't aware that this might be temporary, when I just rose my hand to be recognized, but should this be a more permanent situation, then I'd like us to pursue figuring out how we would do this. As long as the member that's not attending physically has a vote at the committee, council, and exact session. So if it's purely to attend and weigh in, but no vote, then I'm not so crazy about pursuing this. But, so I would say, let's look into it further. Thank you.
Yeah, I would ask staff to follow up on it, and with the attorney, you know, see if there is any liability. Yes, sir.
Going back to Alderman Winger's concern, you'd be able to vote, and that's not, that's not a question.
I'm sorry?
You would be able to have a vote with the remote participation, so that's not an issue.
He would be able to have a vote?
Yeah, yes.
Anything that's going on?
Correct.
But legally, what if something happened to him while he's?
Again, that I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. What would our liability be? Alderman Coles?
Make a suggestion that we'd rather go until after the first of the year and see what happens. You only got, you only have two more meetings, and...
Actually, one more.
One, well, one, one more meeting. And after that, it'll be the first of the year, and we'll see what happens the first of the year. I thought he said this was a temporary, they put him on temporary shift.
I understand.
I don't think we should knock him, knock him out or anything like that, because that's, we didn't elect him, people elected him, so.
Yeah, this, I understand it is a trial period, so it may...
So why don't we do it that way?
Alderman Eugene, Roy Wesley, please.
Well, I don't think we should be talking about one individual. If we're going to do this, it's for the, it's changing the policy too, that any of us could do it, or any county board and city council member could do it. So my question is, okay, they're here remote, we have our Minutetaker here, or someone wants to answer, ask a question, I don't think the iPad raises its hand and say, I want to ask a question. I, I mean, there's, I don't know how far technology's come with this stuff, and I don't know how you would even get the question out there.
True.
I mean, and what happens if the server goes down when we're in the middle of a meeting? I mean, now, now his attendance is no longer, so now, instead of seven Aldermen, now you're down to six Aldermen, or whoever's absent, and you won't even know it.
Once more, it may be just temporary, so I'll make a motion that we table until...
I understand what you're tabling, but just remember, what we're doing here is just, not just for, is for everyone, so we're changing a policy.
So the motion is to table until after the first of the year, and we have more information from both the council and the municipal lawyer. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of tabling?
Mr. Woods?
There's no questions during the motion to table. You want to have a voice vote on that? Please call the wall.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Lazara?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Eugene Wesley? Alderman Shaki?
Well, I think that's, I'll say no as well, it's majority.
Alderman Coles?
I'll go with the majority.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
I'm staying.
So what do, does somebody have, does somebody have an idea of what we should be doing? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I think, I know where you were going with this, the only thing that I would ask is, in the meantime, if we decide to hold this off until after the first year, I would ask that, give staff direction to look at what it would cost to do this project, okay? It may not even be worth the cost for the city to do that.
I would think that.
So, I mean, I really don't want to kill this whole thing. I'd like to have them do the research, get the cost, because then right after, if we table it till the first year or after, then let's, let's do it. But again, it's not addressing this one individual, it's addressing this whole thing. I'm fortunate that we didn't have this discussion when Mr. Coles was out, which we couldn't get that resolved, but here's an opportunity that if someone is actually sick for a long period of time, and again, he should have the option to somehow do something. So I would ask that, if a motion comes back on the floor, is that we have staff to put together what the cost is, do a survey on surrounding towns, but if they do it, give us some more info before we just table this and...
Alderman Winger, and then the manager.
Thank you. So the way I understand it, we wouldn't be able to implement this right after the first of the year anyways. There's a lot that we have to get ironed out, attorneys, architect it, how it'll work, and what if there's two people out? Because now that one person can be out, there may be times where there's two to three people dialing in remotely, we'll have to figure out the logistics on that. So I believe this will take a couple of months to get everything and processed, should it be viable for us. And secondly, the cost, I'm not going to be, well, the cost is always factored into it, that I believe that for someone who's elected to represent the people, and if they go through the effort, no matter where they are, to dial in, to be a part of the process, cost is going to be subjective with that, that that's a very important function of our government, so while it may be a factor, it's not going to control whether or not we implement this. Thank you.
Plus, Mr. Manager, please.
I can speak to the cost right now. As far as cost, it's going to be, it's going to be minimal. I mean, it's audio technology, we can do it now, it's just, you know, a couple hundred dollars, maybe purchase an additional phone, so it's not going to be a cost barrier. Like I stated before, it's more of personal preference of the council, do you want to allow remote participation? And then we could tailor it how you want to allow it. For instance, I don't think that the remote participation actually counts towards a quorum, but you can still vote, so there's some ins and outs to it, but the cost is not going to be an issue.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I think I agree with what everybody else has set up here. Just let's move forward and answer all those questions. There are many legal questions. How many people can be out? Are those people counted as a quorum? Let's get them answered once and for all, and then we can make a decision for, not only for the person we're talking about, but for anybody else that would go sick, or vacation, or anything else. Thanks.
And you have to remember that five members of the city council must physically attend each meeting, otherwise you don't have a meeting. Mr. Mayor?
And the other thing is, along the lines of what you said, what if that, that person is working, what if their boss doesn't want them to be on the phone while they're driving? I mean, that's a, might be a problem.
That's another point, right? So there's a number of things we have to check into first. So with those ideas in mind, do we want to table it until next year, when we have all the information we need? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Can we have a vote on it again?
He's got a question before we...
I don't think you can have a question when you have a motion to table.
Otherwise, we're going to, it's going to be voted down again, so.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Alderman Woods. And we'll have the question called.
I was just confused. You want to table it until we get more information? All we're asking for is more information, so can't we just give direction to get the information? Nobody's looking to make a decision.
No, we're not making a decision tonight.
No, exactly, I'm in agreement. Just, let's just get the information, but if we table it, then we're not asking for the information.
Well, we're tabling it with the motion including to be, come back to us in January with the information. It'll be brought up again in January. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, pardon me.
There's, you could table it, you cannot table it. I mean, staff's got the direction to get more information, we'll bring it back when we can fit it on the committee agenda, which will likely be in January.
In January.
Likely, no guarantees.
Does that make sense? That's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was an easy. Motion carries. Items to be considered at future meetings, the CIP in January, lockbox contract in January, strategic plan in January, budget for 2014 in February, and the residential franchise agreement in February of next year. Is anything else to add? Anybody else have anything to add to that? If not, I make a motion to adjourn Finance and Administration Committee. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Murmas, would you like to do public health next?
Sure.
Okay. Then I'm going to call to order the public health, what am I doing? I don't know why I'm doing that, I'm sorry. I have to do that before I apologize.
No one I screw with. All right. Call to order the Public Health Safety and Judicial Committee. All right. I make a motion for the minutes of the meeting of November 29, 2012. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any questions? No questions, thank you. Second, report and recommendation of agreement for collections, collected for tickets and fines that have been done. We had one offer called TrackX, was that TrackX first?
Northwest Collectors.
Yeah, and now, now we're switching over to Municipal Collecting Agency, so we're going to let the chief take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, what we're looking for tonight is approval to sign an agreement with Municipal Collection Services Incorporated, since, especially since our bringing the Tracks Guard Railroad violations to an in-house process, any enforcement of any fines of that civil finding of liable falls onto the city, as opposed to the... uh, any enforcement of any fines of that civil finding of liable, uh, falls onto the city, as opposed to the, uh, the court, if they were to appear in court under normal circumstances, under a, under a traffic ticket. Uh, with that being said, uh, the program's been successful with, uh, collecting, uh, from about seventy to seventy-five percent of the violators, uh, that are found liable after the ability to contest their citation through an administrative hearing. But even though that part has been successful, uh, if we look over the first six months of the, the new system, uh, and that's about the amount that you have to look at to know that they've had every opportunity to pay and they've, there's been a final determination. Uh, we had about fifty thousand dollars in outstanding fines that are, that are out there. Going into this new in-house adjudication, uh, we were aware that we were gonna have to address these collection issues, uh, and we decided to leave it several months before we did that, to see how the program was going and what the success rate was. Uh, so there's a vendor out there that does a number of municipalities' collections around here. Uh, it's called, uh, Midwa- uh, Municipal Collection Services. We've met with them, uh, we like their process, we like, uh, uh, the company and how they, how they handle these collections. Uh, and we've also negotiated with them a, a split where any fines that they collect, ones that we would already have to send to collections, they would receive thirty-three percent of the fines, the city will receive sixty-seven percent of all fines, uh, which is a much better rate than we're getting right now. Uh, so the goal with that would be, is to, obviously, the in-house Tracks Guard, we would send those to them. Uh, but also, from this point forward, I would like to start sending all of, uh, past due parking tickets that normally, right now, would go to this other Northwest Collections and do it all through one company. Um, there was the opportunity to go with, uh, the company that handles our railroad enforcement. They do have a collection arm, but handing over also our parking tickets and any other local citations, they don't really handle those, so we're looking for a one-stop shop. So that would get that going, and if there was ever any desire to add any other type of collection services, we'd be all set up with this company. So, uh, that's what we're looking for, is agreement to, uh, or approval to sign an agreement with Municipal Collection Services.
Anybody got any questions? Alderman Shaki?
Is there not, uh, something in effect right now that municipalities can let the state know? And the state would not give them a license renewal or a plate renewal?
Uh, there is a program right now, uh, that specifically deals, the, the plate renewals, that's more for an emissions testing type thing, uh, on your vehicles. The, the enforcement wing that the Illinois Department of Revenue has in effect is for basically garnishing tax refunds. Um, and, uh, what that would entail is they, this company does offer that service. Uh, they would, after exhausting all other collection efforts, they then have to file a certain amount of paperwork with the state, the treasurer's office. And if that's accepted, uh, they would garnish a tax refund before it would come to them. They have a right to, to appeal and do all that. That's not currently written in the contract, uh, because I, I, I was sort of the impression that that was approached a while ago for other types of debts, and the city chose not to go that route. It could be added, um, but that's, i- i- and if it was added, the split would be seventeen percent to the collection company and eighty-three percent to the city. So that's out there, but that's not part of this current contract. If that was the direction that you gave us, we could get it added to the contract, but we didn't pursue that at this time.
Personally, I'd like to see that, but up to the council.
Anybody else? Sir Lazara? Alderman Lazara?
Greg, how long do we usually hold, um, a ticket for, before we'll send it over to a collection agency?
Your typical parking ticket, uh, once it's issued, they get fifteen days to pay it, at which time, uh, the fine doubles. Uh, so basically, if they pay it early, they, you know, the fine stays lower. Uh, after that point, we send them a notice in the mail. Prior to that even happening, once they receive the ticket, they're allowed to come into the station and fill out a protest form. Uh, so let's say, uh, someone for, uh, forgets to hang their handicap placard in their, in their car. Or, uh, uh, you know, they have some reason that they forgot to call in a car overnight that was parking overnight, because there wasn't... There's a number of situations that they're allowed to protest that, uh, and that goes through the watch commander and then to me to eventually make a decision on the parking ticket. So they've had all those opportunities, uh, they're sent a notice then, and then they can request a court date to challenge it in the cir- in, uh, Addison Field Court. Uh, if they choose to challenge it, then a judge would obviously make a determination. Most people, uh, that don't pay the fines, they just simply ignore it. And, uh, probably, it's usually about three to four months before it's ever, uh, sent to collections. That's about the typical, we don't, we don't send them to collections right on the due date or right, uh, we, we try still give it some time, but some people just don't end up paying.
All right.
When that, uh, finally gets to the collection agency, because you said that it increases, um, bi-monthly? Is that it? And, and what would that finally be, once it gets to them?
Uh, it doesn't increase for going to collections, so let's say a, uh, uh, not having, uh, or parking in a fire lane. If it was a twenty-dollar ticket, it doubles to forty dollars after fifteen days if they don't pay it. Uh, handicap violations, those start at two-fifty, and if they don't pay them, it goes to three-fifty. So, what, the decision to send it to collections at some point, that does not increase the fine anymore. It basically just becomes a final determination that that debt is owed to the city. And then the collection agency has a responsibility to send out a notice to the person to make it a valid debt, and then pursue collection through those means.
But it never increases once they get it, then?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? Mr. Woods?
Like, if you didn't show up to court, you, there's a warrant issued, right?
Correct.
So if you didn't pay the ticket, isn't that kind of the same thing? Don't you go through a similar process?
Well, there, with, with parking tickets and with the, uh, track, new Tracks Guard, the, the ones that we're handling in-house, there's never that personal interaction between the officer and the, uh, and the violator. So, if they choose not to go to court, we would have to subpoena them into court. If we're able to deliver the subpoena to them, then, if they don't appear in court, a warrant could be issued. Uh, but with dealing with the Tracks Guard, the railroad crossings in-house now, it's just not feasible for us to, uh, drive all throughout the suburbs to, to try and chase them down. We give a proper notice, um, and then we would have, because it's written under, not a moving violation, but a civil liability under Illinois code and the city code, uh, summoning them into court just is, isn't practical. So we can't just issue a warrant if they don't pay the, uh, you know, if they don't appear before the local, uh, administrative hearing judge.
And these tickets are just specifically for Tracks Guard, I mean, mainly?
That's correct. We, uh, any other traffic citations for moving violations are written either under city code or Illinois compiled statutes, and then those people, they're delivered a citation right then. They have to appear in court or a warrant can be issued for them.
And in prior years, how much have we lost?
Uh, I don't have the complete number on parking tickets. I, I suspect it's substantial. Um, I, I looked for the last year, uh, and we collect about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month through collections. I would say we probably have a success rate of ten to fifteen percent. And, uh, I'm hopeful with, uh, this company, with, with their technology and how they do it, maybe we'll get to twenty, twenty-five percent. But, uh, getting much beyond that is gonna be difficult anyways, just national trends for those types of debts.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? Eugene?
So, at one time, we did have a collection agency.
We currently do have a collection agency for outstanding parking tickets and local ordinance tickets. Uh, let's say someone's issued a fighting ticket or something. That's out there right now. This isn't anything new. Uh, we could send the Tracks Guard ones to them right now. We're just not happy with their performance, and we're getting a much better rate with this other company. So, it, they could be done anyways, it's just, we're looking to change companies now.
Anybody else? All right, I make a motion that we use Municipal, uh, Collecting Agency to collect our parking fines and our other tickets that are not paid, right?
Correct.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Mayor? Chief, real quick, you said right now we collect ourselves about ten to fifteen percent. So on fifty thousand, we'll get about seventy-five hundred?
I'm hopeful that we might get...
Ourselves.
Correct. If we get, uh, if we get about twenty percent of those, so ten thousand dollars, we'll get about sixty-seven hundred of that, uh, in a year. If, if they're able to succeed at a twenty percent rate.
Well, that would be less than we're getting right now, then. If we're getting...
No.
Ten to fifteen percent.
They're getting prob- they're probably collecting from ten to fifteen percent of them, so let's say if it was even, I'll give them fifteen percent.
Who's, wait, us collecting right now or them collecting? Because if we co- if we're collecting fifteen percent, that's seventy-five hundred dollars on fifty grand.
This is just for the uncollected debts.
Right, let's say we have fifty thousand uncollected, and right now, we're getting about fifteen percent, that's seventy-five hundred.
We're splitting that fifteen percent then, because the, the collection company, I, they're, they're probably, at the most, collecting from about fifteen percent of the outstanding parking, parking tickets. And then, once that fifteen percent is collected, we get half a split with them. They get fifty percent, and they send us a check for the other fifty percent.
Oh, because I was gonna say, if we go with the other guy and we're only, we're making less, why do we wanna go with the other guy?
No, this'll be more advantageous for the city, and it's gonna be a similar process.
All right, okay. All right, the motion's been set. It's been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
One opposed. All right. A report and recommendation on light, uh, replacement grant. This is a grant to replace the lights in City Hall, the fluorescent lights, because the fluorescent lights are gonna... These fluorescent lights are gonna be outdated, and we're not gonna be able to get this particular, uh, fluorescent light bulb anymore. And that's the reason why we, he got this grant to replace these, or we got this grant to replace these. Chief, you can take over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, this basically comes down to the lighting that is present in City Hall and, uh, the Public Works Building at Seven Twenty North, and the other, uh, wastewater buildings, excluding anything that's gonna be, uh, rebuilt through the wastewater treatment plant remodel. So this does not include those, uh, we made sure that they include, pulled those out. But, basically, through, uh, Clean Air Accounts Committee, uh, we've been looking for ways to save money and reduce carbon emissions. Uh, one of those opportunities is, uh, is out there for us right now. Uh, there's about ninety, and actually, let me get you, uh, there's actually an estimate of ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars in lighting upgrades that need to be done, um, not immediately, but they're going to have to be done in the next several years throughout City Hall and these other buildings. The current lights that you see here are T-twelve, the larger fluorescent bulbs. The U.S. Department of Energy and through Congress, a law that was passed many years ago. Uh, manufacturers are no longer allowed to make these types of bulbs and ballasts. You're already seeing the prices dramatically increase, and eventually, they're gonna be unable to be, be purchased in the very near future. What we're gonna have to replace them with is eventually T-eight bulbs, which are much smaller, or LED bulbs. So we had a company that, uh, that's doing some, uh, some of these energy audits out there. They came out and they did a tour of our, all of our facilities. Uh, they identified the lights that would have to be switched out, and they assisted us with preparing some grant paperwork, uh, to pay for these, these lighting. So out of ninety-one thousand, four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars in work to be done, uh, the city, if they, if they choose to accept it, and we haven't committed to anything yet, we've been guaranteed forty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents in an Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant, and twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty dollars, uh, through the Illinois Clean Air, uh, Energy Foundation. What that leaves is a maximum of twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars that the city would have to play, pay to upgrade all these lighting fixtures throughout the city. Uh, next Thursday, the twentieth, uh, as part of this process and the, the stuff that the company has provided to us, they're gonna obtain a price, a price from several people who would wanna do this project, and they're gonna come back to us and give us the price. They're telling us it's gonna be twenty-one thousand, eight-oh-five or less. They have many agencies that have done this, that have paid zero, or maybe up to ten percent, so maybe in the ten thousand dollar range. So, uh, along with this, you know, something that we're going to have to replace, you know, if this one goes bad tomorrow, they're gonna have to put a new kind of ballast in. All of them will go bad eventually. What the energy company is saying is we're gonna save one-hundred-and-twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty kilowatt hours and reduce, uh, uh, over two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand pounds of CO2 that won't be released into the atmosphere. And, uh, the mu- the financial return, if the city does have to pay the approximate twenty-one thousand dollars, would be just under four years, uh, for the energy savings to be reached, uh, just in the buildings outside of City Hall. So we think it makes financial sense to go forward with it. The money is there, the money won't always be there, and, uh, uh, we're looking to go forward. And, uh, as long as it comes in at that twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars or less, uh, we'd like to get approval, uh, to proceed with this project. And, uh, we could always come back for final approval with the final number, but, uh, there's some tight timelines that, if, uh, this is approved, by the end of December, we have to send, we have to sign the paperwork with the one grant to say we're gonna go forward with it.
I would like, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, go through with this and get, get the company to, uh, see if they'll sign up for us and see what hap- see if we, throughout the whole, all the buildings in, in the city except for the, uh, sewer plant that we're working on. Do I have a motion? Uh, I mean, a second?
Second.
All, okay, Mr. Woods, any question?
Just one. I know the, that there's a lot of different programs out there, just... The fire department did this probably nine months ago and paid next to nothing, so if you just keep an eye out and try to keep it as close to zero...
That's what we're hoping for.
That's what we're hoping for.
All right. Thank you. That was it.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? Eugene?
I, I just have a couple of questions. You said a timeline is coming near that we would have to sign. My question, let's take the worst scenario out of this, and say we don't get the money, or whatever it may be. What, this is not in the CIP, so someone is gonna answer me where twenty-one thousand dollars is gonna come from? Or where is it coming, what account it's coming out of?
Uh, I did...
It's in the CIP.
I, I did have some discussions with, uh, Mr. Finance Director. Do you mind just handling, there, there is some funds available, uh, but I'll let him, he knows exactly what account that's out of.
And, and before you answer that question, another question. I thought years ago we did something like that in the City Hall before. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not... But go, go ahead, let me answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The lighting conversion for City Hall and the Police Department has been in the CIP probably two or three times over the last four years. It comes in, then we get a price, oh, maybe we can get a grant. And then we start, we look, there's no grant, so it never gets done. So it, it's been off, on again, off again for probably three or four years. You are correct, uh, in that it's been explored a couple of times. Uh, so far as the funding for this, um, one of the projects that was in the CIP, um, under the heading of City Hall Improvements, was the atrium windows in the rotunda. Um, and part of that project actually got paid out of last year's budget, because we accelerated the project, um, per council direction, because they were leaking, had mold in them, things of that nature. Um, so all of the funds that were budgeted under the, the silo of City Hall Improvements was not spent. So there's about eighteen thousand dollars in that account still available. And there's about a hundred thousand dollars in the Public Works Building Improvement Silo that's not spent. And if you kinda look at the, the numbers on it, I don't know the specifics, it's probably, what, about ninety-ten? The work between this building and, probably about ninety-ten. So, worst case, if you take twenty... about ninety-ten, so worst case, if you take twenty thousand and ninety-ten, it, you're right at about the number that's available under the City Hall Improvement Line, and then there's plenty of money in the Public Works Line, so you're pretty much right at the available budget in, in the one silo, and the other silo has quite a bit of money, so.
Can I add to your question here?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm in favor of doing it, but I just wanted to know where the money was coming from.
One point about this is by next Thursday's council meeting, I might have the number. I'm hopeful that Thursday afternoon, we'll get the number from them, and like I said, I'm hopeful with what other towns have experienced, that it's going to be much less than that twenty thousand, but I've got to have it on the agenda to be voted on, otherwise we're not going to be able to sign it by the end of December, and we'll lose, we won't be guaranteed any funding then, so, you know, with that in mind, I should, I hope to have a number next Thursday as to what it's going to cost.
All right. One more question. But you stated, if I'm mistaken, you stated some of the funding is already, that we've been approved for. Am I right?
Yes, if we choose to accept it.
Okay. So do we have it in writing from someone that some of this money is already earmarked?
Yes.
That is guaranteed?
Yes. The-
Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
The twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty, I've got the paperwork for that right here.
Okay.
We've just got to commit to the project, and then I believe we have six months to complete the project, and we've been notified through the company that did this, this Three-Sixty Energy Group, that the Deco grant has been approved for us, too. So I've, I've been told, and I, I have no reason to doubt, we're going to have about seventy thousand dollars worth of funding that's already guaranteed with us. We're not going to go through with this if we don't get that funding.
Does the Deco grant, is that already in writing, or is, was that a verbal to you?
That was a verbal to me that we've been approved, and I certainly wouldn't go through with this unless I know that funding's there, so we're not going to tell someone to come in until we know that's all solidified.
Well, we had a verbal, and then at one time up here on, on the grant, and all of a sudden, we went forward, and we lost a grant. I just-
This one's coming through. I'm positive.
Just want to make sure we got them all in writing.
Okay. All right.
Wait, you guys did the motion, but there was no dollar amount in there, not to succeed the twenty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars. I mean-
If you want, I will put that in. I'll make the motion that we add, that it doesn't go over, what, twenty, how about making it-
Twenty, make it twenty-two.
Twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's fine.
Just in case something comes up.
The secondary.
Who said, seconded? Okay. Okay, we're seconded, man. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Items to be considered on a future meetings. One is penalties of liquor licenses on gambling violations, January two thousand thirteen. Anybody got anything else they want to add? All right, and then I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody say, okay, let's go.
Okay.
Okay. Public Works, you're on.
I'll call the Public, Public Works Committee order, make, make, take the same people who are present, any motion approved in minutes, November twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Correction, changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is driveway, driveway replacement for the street improvement projects. Who's taking the lead on that one?
Good evening.
We're bringing this before the committee tonight, just to get some guidance on our current driveway replacement policy. Currently, what we do on streets to be rehabilitated, which is the overlay, grind and overlay type street repair, is that we do spot curb repair where we feel the curb has been damaged and no longer conveys water, and where that spot curb repair coincides with a driveway apron, we typically remove two feet of the existing apron in order to install a form and to replace the curb. So it's a, it's not the full apron, it's not the distance from the curb to the sidewalk. The current policy is to only remove two feet in order to basically construct a new curb and put it back in place. This summer, during our construction project with the street program, we received numerous complaints from residents who wanted to see the entire apron replaced, that say, go so far as to say the, the policy wasn't very popular with a lot of the residents that were along the routes of the project. We do these type of projects for a number of communities in the area. It is typical that the type of work that we're performing here in the city is only, it coincides with a two-to-four-foot apron replacement. It's not typical that the entire aprons replaced for spot curb repair on rehabilitation projects, so I think the city is doing what most towns do in the area, but like I said, we did receive a number of complaints from the residents along the project this year about not replacing the entire apron, and so what we wanted to do is just bring the issue up to the committee, let you know that, one, we did receive this feedback from the residents, and just sort of get the, the thoughts of the committee on how we would proceed for future road rehabilitation projects. Would you like to remain with the two-foot replacement, or would we change our policy and go to more of a complete apron, apron replacement for rehabilitation projects? The issue is primarily financial. If you replace the full aprons on all the driveways on a street that you're doing an overlay project on, it's going to allow us to do less streets with the same amount of money. Yeah, for example, we did a, an estimate on this year's program, and if we would have done the entire apron replacement of all the driveways on the program, it would have added about four-hundred thousand dollars to this year's project, so it's a substantial amount of money with a constrained budget that may mean less streets per year for the city, and so it's, it's a big issue. Just wanted to let you know this is, you know, the feedback we received, and maybe get a little guidance from the committee on how you'd like us to proceed for future road programs.
Allman Roy Wesley.
You can ask other questions you want for your committee. You don't have to pressure him. I have a problem with, with this. Say I replaced my driveway two years ago, and now the city comes along and does the streets. I did the apron, it's the city portions anyways. You cut away, and now I spent six, seven thousand dollars on my driveway, and I got a cut in the middle and two different shapes of concrete and black top or whatever you want to do. I mean, do you think that that's fair to the residents? I don't think so.
That is a, that, that does happen on some of these jobs, and, and the residents really get upset about that, especially when they've done recent work on their own replacement and paid for the replacement. You're correct.
And did we do more streets this year than we do normally?
I believe so, yes. It's a larger road program that I'm aware of, that I'm actually aware of.
So, I mean, it is, the apron does belong to the city. We're the ones that's doing the damage most of the time from the salt and stuff hitting the driveways and the aprons because of pitting of the concrete. It's something that we should look into of doing it all, because it is our property. We're just making it, letting them use it. Thanks.
Yeah, the first alternative is replace no amount of driveway apron unless dictated by construction activity. What does that mean?
Well, if we're doing an overlay type project, this is opposed to a complete reconstruction of it, so if we're doing an overlay project, we normally would not replace any aprons unless we were repairing the curb right in front of the apron, so those jobs, the overlay projects are typically accompanied by what we call spot repair. We look for pieces of damaged curb and repair those. So if someone had a driveway apron and the curb in front of it didn't need to be replaced, we would not normally do any work on their apron, plus, so that's the typical deal, but if we have curb replacement in front of someone's driveway apron, that's when we get into this, we get involved with a partial replacement, and right now the policy is two foot behind the back of curb in order to install the form to replace it, but I, what we're saying is that policy is not always popular with the residents, especially for like, Alderman Wesley mentioned, if, if they had recently replaced it on their own, they, they certainly don't like us cutting two feet into a newly done apron, so that does become a problem sometimes.
Go ahead.
Sure. Want to follow up?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I agree with Alderman Wesley. If they, if there's nothing wrong with the apron and you're just replacing the curb, why bother with the apron at all? But who makes the decision? I mean, if it's pitted and the people would like a new apron, but there's nothing basically wrong or dangerous about the apron.